Did we, did we, did we? It was the phone call. Did we, uh, we do a sweep? I don't know why it was buggers.
Am I what?
I think you said we're on. All right, we're gonna convene a meeting at this time, everyone. Thank you. This Thursday, November 21st, 6:30, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the council meeting for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Could everyone stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Diane, please let the record show that all members of council present this evening. And we're gonna start off this evening with a special presentation from the Guardian Ed Lightum Program by Kristy Gels. Kristy, you're on.
I wanna take the opportunity first to thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and present. I am with the Guardian Ed Lightum Program here in Palm Beach County. I'm the volunteer recruiter. And I wanted to come out to the council and to the Village of Royal Palm and kind of introduce what Guardian Ed Lightum is briefly, and what we do, and what we hope to accomplish with the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Guardian Ed Lightum is a court-appointed program for children who have been taken from a home environment because of abuse, neglect, or abandonment. It starts with an investigation from the Department of Children and Families. They deem it's necessary to take this child from a home environment. And now what happens? The child is put into the foster care system. The first question that's usually asked is how many children are in foster care in Palm Beach? Right at this moment, they're over seventeen hundred. We have about six hundred and thirty volunteers, always, always looking for more volunteers. People ask, well, how come you need more? Six hundred and thirty volunteers? Seventeen hundred children. We're about at ninety percent coverage of children, but those who are not are taken under the wing of our case manager. And when you have case managers who have maybe fifty cases and a hundred children in those cases, it gets very difficult. We are the advocate and the voice for that child through the court system, through the dependency court system. So our volunteers visit the children, work with the parents, work with the teachers, work with the community on the needs of that child. Any special need or anything that will keep that child as normal as possible, what we consider normal. You know, everything in their life has been uprooted. I've given you a brochure packet, a little bit more about what we are and who we are, and why we, why we are here. I wanna introduce the community, the people of the community, the businesses, the political aspect of the community, to know that we are here and that we, we are in need of sponsorships, of people to come and take on a case of a child. And if that's not a possibility with time and with job and, and with life, that we have a Speak Up For Kids program, which is our own 501(c)(3). And we are always looking for charitable donations, on whether they're toys, or new toys, or books, or games, or gift cards, or sneakers, or whatever the case may be. Because these chi- children are leaving their home, a lot of times with nothing. The guardian could be a grandma, grandpa, neighbor, friend, but not mom and dad because of the situation that's happening at home. And the volunteers' commitment's about ten hours to twelve hours a month. They go all through the proper training, and the background, and the fingerprint, and the referencing. And once the training is over, it gets a little easier on the volunteer because now you're on your time. And you're on the time where you can call and make an appointment to see that child and to be there for that child. So I'm hoping the community hears this and, and jumps in full blast into helping in some way for these children. I would love to see all of you get involved in it as a group or individually. Our website is GALPBC.org so somebody can go on there and, and look. Do you all have any questions of me, of, of anything that we do? Please.
I have one question. Is, is your program just limited to what you said, situations where kids are in foster care? Cause from what I remember, at least in Broward, about twenty-something years ago, it wasn't just limited to that. They also did, if there were divorce proceedings, and there was a big custody issue, and they needed an advocate for the child, the Guardian Ed Lightum, at least down there, would do that. Is that something they don't do anymore?
Right, that's family court. We are through dependency court.
Okay, so this is only the dependency court Guardian Ed Lightum?
That's correct.
Completely different animal, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it seems to be growing and growing in the number of children because I went, I go out last month, and we were at fifteen, close to sixteen. Now we're getting close to being over seventeen hundred children, you know, so quickly. So it's getting a lot harder, and, you know, we need that person who's gonna have the time and wants to be that voice because the child has no voice in the, in the courts and in the system. My dear, yes, please.
You had mentioned about funding. Do you still, do I still have the option, if I'm selected for jury duty, to have my fees? Okay, so if you just wanna talk about that a little bit, for those who may not know, yeah.
Absolutely. If you're selected for jury duty here in Palm Beach County, you know, you get a stipend, I think fifteen dollars a day, you know, for, for coming in. You can sign that over to Guardian Ed Lightum. And they give you that opportunity to do that once you come in and you sign in for jury duty. And that's a wonderful thing because that's, you know, that's, that's a blessing for us because that's money we didn't have yesterday. We don't have to work hard for it. Our Speak Up For Kids goes out and, and really helps because, as you know, we're state-funded. And this is all you do, is talk about money and funding and budget. Well, our budget's about that big. So, you know, we don't have the budget to go out and, and hire this lady and this gentleman as quickly and as needed as possible. So Speak Up For Kids goes out and does events, and helps with the funding and the sponsorship and the grants. But yes, that money is, is available, knock on wood. It will stay like that for a very long time.
So, so there is another program called Attorney Ed Lightum, right? Is that a?
That's, that's.
That's the other court system? That is the joint custody kind of a issue type thing?
I can't answer that fully. I, I don't know. And I know there's guardians that, excuse me, attorneys that do it pro bono. Those are, that's not Guardian Ed Lightum. We do have our staff. We have about fifty staff of attorneys and case managers. And we do, we get a lot of attorneys coming through the program that wanna be the volunteer, not the attorney.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jan.
Kristy, thank you for being here.
My pleasure, thank you.
Making this presentation. A couple of questions. One, of the children that you said are in foster care, do you know how many are from Royal Palm Beach?
No, but I can find that out for you. I honestly, I don't.
Sure, no problem. And then, paint us a picture of a success story. You know, one of the volunteers who've really made a difference with the, with one of the children.
One of the volunteers that's made a difference. It's about a year, I'm gonna say about a year, year and a half ago, there was that big case that was here in Palm Beach County of the ten children who, was really the tenth child, the baby who died of malnutrition. Do you remember this case? And unfortunately, all ten children came into, into our program. And by the time that all happened, she was expecting again. So we took all those ten children, and unfortunately, you know, they had to go to different, different homes. Sorry, but the success story is that we have a husband and wife volunteer who have taken on that case. And those children are doing amazing through what the, oh, I have so many stories. But amazing through what those two are doing, and the care, and the representation in court, and in the schools, and with the parents, and with, you know, the physicians and the teachers, that these kids are doing a hundred times better than they did. We have so many success stories.
They took all the kids?
I'm so sorry.
They took all of them?
They took all of them.
Wow.
They took all of them. So when the husband is seeing maybe a few here, because, you know, three went here, two went here, one went here, one went here. And usually, you know, that, that kinda case is gonna have maybe three, four, five volunteers on it. They took it all. So they're our success story. And what they're doing is our success story for the children. Our children are going through school. They're not, you know, they're, they're going through and graduating. Because they have that mentor, and because they have that volunteer, and they have somebody who's listening and, and watching out for them. And statistics show that, that they don't go down the bad path. We're trying to nip this in the bud really quickly.
Great. When, when, I guess the, the action initiated by DCF?
Yes, sir.
Finds the situation, removes the child. Is the child, if the child is, is placed with relatives, is that considered being in the foster care system?
Absolutely.
Really?
Absolutely. Whoever comes forward for that child, whether it's a family member, a neighbor, a friend, if there's nobody for that child, then it turns to foster, a foster family. Do you all know that there are only three hundred foster families in Palm Beach County? Seventeen hundred children. Again. So if there's no place there, then the child's gonna go to a group home. But people do step up, and grandmas and grandpas and neighbors will take it. And they're, and they're gonna be with that child for a year plus. Because the mother, the father, the mother and father, whoever had the custody, sometimes doesn't do the case plan as quickly as they should. So it goes on and on. But the volunteer stays. And the volunteer's the one single force that stays with that child. Who's that constant.
Yeah.
You know, the constant force. But yes, the child's automatically considered foster, foster care, even with grandma.
Any other questions, though?
I thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity. The community for listening to me.
Thank you for coming, but before you leave, isn't there a special day tomorrow?
There's a very special day tomorrow in our, in our courthouse. It's National Adoption Day. And there'll be twenty-five children. It's a beautiful, beautiful day, just, we bring our Kleenex, we're all ready. We're all ready for it. It starts downstairs with clowns and pizza, and it goes upstairs to the biggest courtroom that we have in the courthouse. And all the judges, like yourselves, you know, are sitting on a panel, and they each talk. And then it's all broken down into four different courtrooms. And the child swears in, and the, the family swears, and they're family. And it's, it has to be the best day of the year, and the best day in the courthouse. So we all wear red because it's for National Adoption Day, and it's a beautiful thing. You know, it's for those, and grandparents are adopting grandkids, and neighbors are adopting, you know, their children.
Some of the material you gave us, I saw that you have to be at least twenty-one years old to be a volunteer. The volunteers are guardian of light.
To take on a case, correct.
Is there a, an age where someone could be considered too old to be considered for that? Because I would imagine there are a lot of senior citizens who are still very mobile. That might be something that's interesting.
More mobile than I am.
Something more.
Have more energy than I do. No, we, we just lost, when I say lost, moved, a volunteer that came into our office and did office work. And she was so proud one day, and she said, I gotta tell you, Kristy, what today is. She says, it's my wedding anniversary. I said, wow, that's awesome. And how many years? She goes, you're not gonna believe me. And I said, how many years? She goes, seventy-five. Okay, and I had to do some very quick addition. She was ninety.
Yeah, you did a lot.
She was ninety-four years old.
Wow.
Wouldn't guess it for the world. And she was in every week, sometimes twice a week. So no, there's no age. As long as you're able-bodied and wanna do this, and your heart is in the right place, we will accept you. And as far as being twenty-one, that's the, you know, the legal age, and, but if they're close.
And there's no formal education requirement?
No, no educational requirements whatsoever, no professional requirements whatsoever. Just the willingness to help that child, be that, with that child, and go through the, the training that we have, and to have a clean background. That's, that's the important thing, is to have a clean background. But your heart has to, you know, be what guides you.
We're gonna see what we can do, some of the information you have in here, if we can get that, you know, available or pushed out to our citizens, at least make it available to them.
Thank you.
To help get the word out. And we thank you for coming this evening. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all so very much. I really appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy holidays. Thank you, and I hope to hear from you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You wanna do a photo op with us before you go?
I'd love to.
Okay. What do you guys think? Photo op?
Sure.
Sure.
What was that? A clean shirt, what was that?
I think we came up with. Oh, that's beautiful. Look at that. Isn't that gorgeous? Look at that. Such a great picture. You are okay with that going on Facebook and the webpage, right? That can go out in public?
That's fine.
Thank you. That's good, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to reports right now, and I, I guess I have an update. We had a, this past week, we had a, we being a transportation planning agency, had a workshop to talk about potential projects that were being proposed. Primarily projects proposed by the county for inclusion on our long-term transportation plan, which looks out all the way out to 2045. It was, it was a very spirited, a lot of spirited discussion that went on. And I guess the bottom line is by December 12th, the TPA must submit its, its updated plan. Otherwise, we're not, we're gonna be defunded for certain projects that are on the plan if it's not submitted by that timeframe. The other thing I wanted to report is that the, the agency itself, as I, as you know, for the last year and a half, I've been reporting that they're transitioning to become independent. But they actually moved into their own space, their own offices last week. So we all know how, how challenging a move is. So they're moving ahead, and a lot of, a lot of work is ahead of this agency. There's a, one of the things we talked about at the workshop was that we're kinda, we're kinda entering what one could call a new frontier in terms of the transitioning that's going on across the transportation landscape in general. There's so many complexities that are coming, converging on this space. And one of the things that's more important now than ever is our strategic planning needs to really be strategic. We don't want folks twenty years from now to look back and say, what were they thinking? Why didn't they think of the things that we should have been thinking about? And we're doing that, trying to do that now. So anyway, that, that was the update on the TPA. And with that, Jan, we'll start with you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Speaking of transportation, on December 19th, I will be attending the issues forum that we talked about a couple of months ago. And the, the top issues are.
Transportation?
Regional transportation network and mobility plans, housing, sea level rise and water, and then hurricane preparation. So I'll be able to report on that at our next meeting, but I'm excited to learn through white papers and the conversation that's gonna take place.
Okay. Should be interesting.
Yeah. Also, speaking of transportation, I know that we've talked about the no texting law, and it passed in July. But I don't know that everybody knows or remembers, there's a special provision in there. If you're through a school zone or a construction site, you have to be hands-free. So not even texting, it's hands, you know, phone down. So I don't know that everybody knows that. And then lastly, I'm happy to report that Representative Matt Willhite has filed a, a budget request.
I knew one of you were gonna talk about that.
Yeah, on the village's behalf to build the all-access playground in Commons. You know, this initiative was brought up during strategic plan, planning, thanks to Congressman Boulontis. And it, it'll be really exciting as we have an all-accessible playground in Commons. So I know that Matt is working on that for us.
I'm just hoping it gets through the process and, and gets beyond the veto, the veto pen of the governor. So we'll, we'll see how that progresses.
I think there's a couple of us gonna go help Matt.
You're making a trip up there?
During Palm Beach County days.
Palm Beach County days, good.
Yep.
Okay.
Good opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
So Veterans Day, thank you very much. It was a really good event, and of course, nothing like a little food to attract a crowd. And I think that helped a lot. I, I know for me, the highlight was the challenge coins that were given out to each of the veterans. And, and I'm sure you appreciated yours. It's, it's really unique, it was really well done, and thank you very much to our Parks and Rec, and also to American Legion Post 367, who kind of emceed and ran the celebration. So it was a good thing, and we also got a chance to kind of engage with the Royal Palm Beach High School Navy Junior ROTC cadets, of which there are a hundred and seventy-six, I think. So that program is growing really rapidly, and you can see the quality of the, of the young folks that are involved in it. Speaking of going to Tallahassee or engaging with our legislature in one way or another, I brought back from our Florida League of Cities meeting on legislative priorities for the coming session that was held Wednesday and Thursday of last week. And what I brought back was, first of all, let me, let me tell you about, if I haven't already told you, that Florida League of Cities has come up with a new logo and a new tagline. The logo is no longer, it used to look like a city skyline.
Oh, it's a new logo.
It's a, it's a brand-new logo, and, and the logo itself is something that looks like a sun, as in Sunshine State. It, it looks also like a, an icon that locates you on a map, a Google Map kind of a location kind of a thing. And there's, there's logic behind it, but I'm not sure that I, I grasp it well enough to do a good job on explaining it, except to say that it is a combination of representing Florida sunshine image, and then the location thing indicates that what's really important is place and local reference. And that, of course, then goes to the tagline, which says, "Local voices making local choices." So that's, that's what that new logo is all about.
Okay.
And kind of an interesting notion, they're trying to rebrand and, and move into the digital age, really, pushing for something that's more digitally representable, if you will. And so that's an interesting notion. But perhaps more importantly, of course, is preparation for the upcoming legislative season. And what I've shared with you also are a couple of items. One from the Florida League of Cities that actually talks to about eighteen, thirteen different issues, priorities, that they are going to be lobbying for and asking us to help in that process over the next legislative session. And, and then I've also provided you with the Palm Beach County version of the legislative priorities as well. You'll, not too surprisingly, note that there are a lot of similarities there. And also, there are a lot of issues which we've seen before. And the recurring issues of water, water quality, water quantity, septic tanks, housing availability, and other things of that nature are on the list. One of the, one of the opportunities here, of course, is to become familiar with that, but then also to stay abreast of what's going on up in Tallahassee because it's a dynamic environment. So many things change. This is our starting point for both the county and also for the Florida League. And of course, the way to stay in touch with what's going on is to tune in to the, what they call the call-ins that Florida League of Cities runs. The first one will be in January, January 13th, the day before the session starts. And then there's actually one that's even before that, where they're gonna kind of set the stage. They refer to that as the pre-session call-in on December the 16th. And so there's a, a list of kind of a save-the-date activities, all of which are designed to make us aware of opportunities to engage, and also to stay informed on what's going on in Tallahassee. The either, depending on how you wanna look at it, the underlying theme or the overarching theme is always home rule. And as we know, year after year, we have to watch on an individual bill level to make sure that we don't wind up with restrictions being imposed on us that take away our authority to decide about tree trimming, vegetable gardens in the front yard, other things that really, really are best handled by the government closest to the people, which is the argument for home rule. So it's gonna be another session, it's gonna be interesting. I think one of the favorable things is having heard the, the governor talk about home rule from the point of view of, he will look at these individual bills to see if, if there's a good reason to take that authority away from us. And I, I think that is a much healthier perspective to start with. And he's even gone on record and actually vetoed one bill from last session because he felt it was something that should be handled at our level. So that's the good news.
That's encouraging.
And it is, it's very encouraging. So we'll, we'll see how, how that goes, but that requires our involvement. And one other thing I wanna mention was read for the record. Well, we set a new record again this year for Royal Palm Beach. Last year, we, we read to four hundred and some odd kids. This year, we read to six hundred and sixty-two kids.
Nice.
So we've gone up by about two hundred. And we'll see how well we did as compared with the other cities this coming Wednesday at the League of Cities meeting in Boynton Beach, Benvenuto's, Benvenuto's. So in addition to the great food that's provided there, you get an opportunity to find out how we stacked up this year and read for the record. So I wanna thank everybody who was involved in that. And I don't know about you all, but one of my really challenging pieces was explaining wafting. Wafting, as I, we're talking about the, the sound of the stew going out the window, down the hall, out the door, onto the street. See how well, you know, I've got it down. So anyway, it was a great demand again this year, and hopefully we'll keep growing it. So, thank you.
It was, you know, since you mentioned it, it was really a pleasure. I had about, I don't know, fifty or sixty kids at the library, and they were just incredible. It was just, it was just incredible having those kids in there, and, and they really went into the story. And the library, our local library did. And the library, our local library did a great job to really engage the kids, and we actually cooked a make-believe stew after. It was fun. They used it as a learning, a true learning experience.
I watched you get into that reading. I could see that it just appeals to you, it really does.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank the staff also. We did the Rock and Fall Festival, so I appreciate all the work that went into that. I know it was two wet, long days, but it was a great time, those of us who stuck around for it. So, the music was wonderful, and thank you very much to the staff. I'd also, along for the read for the record, like to thank Mrs. McCowsky and Mrs. Griffin over at H.L. Johnson Elementary for letting me read to them. I actually had students acting it out while I was talking, so it was really neat. They got into it, they got in costume and went through, so it was a lot of fun. And thank you again to the staff and American Legion Post 367 for Veterans Day. It was another wonderful event. And it was interesting to do it inside versus outside, but thank you very much for all your help, and at least it was nice and air-conditioned, and the food was delicious. I attended the Business Development Board Entrepreneurial Luncheonship, lunch that they had, and they had a company, Levatus, which is a digital company that was there, and they were talking about different things that they're working on. They work with FPL, and it's specifically to find out, like, their task with FPL is to find out, to predict outages and repairs. So, they talked about technology and how it's always growing and changing, and how it helps with FPL, make sure that we don't lose our electricity, so predicting that stuff. They also talked about advanced robotics, and that they now have dogs, robotic dogs that have HD 365-degree cameras on them, so that they can send them into places, but they can move around on their own, and really go up and down stairs, and just wherever the situation is that they need, or whatever anyone needs for help. And they can carry a weight load as well. So, it's interesting to see how they have the flatbacks and can use that as well. I did go to the supervisor election open house, and one thing that they did confirm was that when you do a mail-in ballot or an early or an absentee, that the supervisor election will pay postage for that. So, in the past, the resident would have to go in and send that in. So, they're really encouraging people to make sure that if you are going to do absentee ballots, to, yeah-
Vote by mail.
Vote by mail. I apologize. The technical term is vote by mail. Right. But I think we're going to work on getting her out for an event, so-
Yeah, we are going to, the village manager, one of the things he's working on is-
Do those things.
Help us get that set up to have the supervisor elections do a standalone event here. And since you mentioned it-
Yeah.
It would be great if we could include the gentleman who's going around doing presentations on the census-
Yeah, Robert.
And have that person involved as well, so we can almost, you know, do two birds with one, one stone there.
I'll give you his information, because that's another thing that I have on my report as well. But with the supervisor election, all their new equipment that they have, how the digital options that there are, so they have machines out there that are touchscreen, so whether you're visually impaired or hearing impaired, you can still vote. So, they do make sure, and whether, depending on your language, they'll have it in English, Spanish, and Creole now as well. So, there's a lot of changes that they're doing over there.
There's no more paper ballot?
There is still a paper ballot. So, you can still do a paper ballot, or you can go electronic and the touchscreen, and you don't have to have an imperative in order to use the touchscreen either. So, if that one's available, you can go right up there and touch. And they still give you the option for a write-in as well, so you can type in whatever you want. So, it's interesting to see how they have it. They're always looking for volunteers and poll workers, and so, yep, she'll talk about that then, which comes in. The other thing, for those of you following along, because we voted on this last year, but we do have our ride-share program up. So, for those who are in need, that, it's through our recreation department, and that there's a class you can take if you are a resident, so you need to prove that you're a resident. It's offered on the first Tuesday of the month, and then after that, you will get a $35 gift card to use for the ride-sharing. So, I know we have a lot of our residents that are very happy about that.
But, but the class is focused on what?
The, is focused on how to use the app so that you can then take care of yourself by ordering your own vehicle to come in.
So, we want to condition, you know, help our seniors take advantage of these, these kinds of-
The technology that's out there to then have that.
Right.
So, hopefully, that'll help them then get out, so those that were having an issue with the transportation will now have access to that. The other thing is thank you very much, so we have a new business guide, so those of you who want to open up a business in Royal Palm Beach, it's a great piece. So, thank you very much to the staff for doing it. And it really breaks down what you need to know, who do you need to go to, where do you go, the phone numbers, everything. Do you need a permit for stuff? So, it really is clean, easy to understand, and a, and a great addition. And then, lastly, I'll talk about the census. So, we do have that coming up as well for 2020. One thing that, it was a event that I went to that they talked about it. They were saying in 2010 that they had a 74% response. This year, they're hoping for an 82% response for 2020 next year. But more importantly is that it's a $675 billion to states' annual budgets. So, it's not only the importance of going through and the funding side of it, but also remembering is that that's how they get the redistricting, so they're going to start redistricting areas with it, but also when you get funding for healthcare, hospitals, schools, emergency, bridges, roads, it's all based on the population. So, they're trying to get everybody really to come out and get counted. There are no immigration questions, no status questions on there as well, so, in that. And what was very interesting is the loss, they said that it is a six, for every person who does not register with the census, to their, to their municipality, it is a $1,600 per person, per year loss, and that's for 10 years. So, when you add that up, is you realize that it really is a huge chunk of money that, that is counted on just based on our population.
I think, you did a calculation on that, right? What was our loss from, from the last two, this last census? Because we were, the, the count went down. Was it about $4 million?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Well, I know in 2080, we were-
It was about 400 carry a year, I think, over the 10s.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I think it was a $4 million loss, and then, and then, if we-
Go to 100?
I think I projected a $15 million loss going forward if we, the difference between 74% and 100%.
A hundred percent, right. So-
And just in Royal Palm Beach.
Big money.
For a little Royal Palm Beach, it's important.
It's very significant. I mean, we, we get more money in the state revenue share than we do in property tax, so-
Right.
It's a significant funding source. It's, it's a lot.
So, that's my report. Thanks.
All right. Great.
One thing that was brought up some time ago for myself and the council, or to come back to the, to the council, on posting of underage drinking signs. We had a request to do that some time ago, about, actually, probably a year and a half ago, and then probably within the last half-year. And the council had asked to bring that back and, and kind of give a position. The request was for posting of underage drinking. And what the, what the, the posting was, that was requested is that, is to put signs where all persons who own or operate a business which sells, dispenses, or dispenses alcohol beverages shall post a notice saying it is unlawful to purchase alcohol if you are under the age of 21, and it is unlawful to sell or dispense alcohol if you're a person under, it's unlawful to sell or dispense alcohol to a person under 21, and is unlawful to purchase alcohol if you are under the age of 21. Some of the cities throughout the county have, have passed this ordinance. Our county has, has passed this ordinance. The penalties associated with the county ordinance are, let's see here, imprisonment, let's see, the penalties associated, imprisonment in the county jail for a period up to 60 days, a fine up to 500, or a fine up to $500 or both, which would be a second-degree misdemeanor. That is redundant with state law. State law has the same thing, where you can't sell or buy alcohol if you're under the age of 21. The first offense is a first-degree misdemeanor, a second offense is a, I mean, a first offense is a second-degree misdemeanor, or a first, second offense is a first-degree misdemeanor for, for selling to or purchasing if you're under the age of 21. This request is just simply putting notices up, telling people that where they could possibly buy or dispense alcohol. So, that would be restaurants, Costco, supermarkets, at the cash registers, stores, everywhere. The county ordinance also has in there that, or you could cite the property owner. That would have to be something to go through code enforcement. Most property owners are remote from the property and not close to the crime, and it probably would not be a good thing to do that. The, what's the other thing here? We feel this is redundant with state law. We feel it would be very difficult to enforce in most of the locations where alcohol is dispensed, or sold, or purchased. And we just don't feel it would be some, it would be something that, that's needed. We, we have no information, we have no studies showing that it will make a difference. How many people actually go up to buy alcohol that don't know they have to be 21? How many people are selling it that don't know they can't sell it to someone under 21? We have no information on the effect of doing this. We think it's extremely burdensome to do something like this. We don't feel having, having an ordinance on the book, that we, we have no idea what its effect will be, and it would be very burdensome to our business owners. It's not something that we, we recommend, that we, we propose, we, we put out there.
You want anything to that, Keith?
And it's redundant with state law.
It sounds like it's redundant with state law and with county ordinance as well.
So, the county ordinance is, is applicable in the unincorporated parts of the county.
Oh, okay.
There, there, nobody has opted in to the county ordinance. We took a look, and there, there's not a single municipal jurisdiction that has opted in.
What would it mean if they opted in? What would that entail?
Then, all of these, these signposting requirements-
Would have to happen.
Would have to happen. So-
But who's, but if it's a county ordinance, aren't they responsible for enforcement? Or does the city become responsible or opt in?
You'd be responsible, and you'd-
So, it has the same effect?
So, you'd have two choices. You could adopt your own ordinance-
Or you opt in.
Or opt in.
But in either case, the burden's on you.
Right. And I can tell you by way of example, one of the things I do in my spare time is serve as-
Spare time?
Yeah, as, as a code enforcement magistrate in the city of West Palm Beach. So, every now and then, they will bring a raft of cases where their police department uses an undercover 19-year-old person. And they go in, and with, you know, money provided by the police department, and they buy a six-pack of Bud Light, and they don't get ID'd, and then, then they cite the business with violating the city code for selling it to an underage person. And then, they have to, then the officer comes to the code enforcement hearing, and they present the evidence. And at the end of the day, they impose a, a civil fine against the business. And then, if it's a repeat, you know, the fine progressively escalates. So, I, you know, I, I see those from time to time, I don't know.
That would be another way to do it?
The effectiveness of that, but, but that is an example of the way another city does it. Again, I don't know, I don't know the end result, what, what kind of benefit it's providing the city other than the financial thing. But, but, to, to the manager's point, it is the city's burden to go out there, and, and they're the ones enforcing it, and going through the exercise and spending the resources to do it, so.
And if we did it as a code enforcement, then it would be handled through our code enforcement and the magistrate. If we did it as a, as like the county ordinance with a $500 fine or threat of imprisonment, then that would be a civil infraction, and if they could not pay for their defense, we would have to fund their defense.
That is true.
Really? Okay.
And we do budget every year for ordinances that we have, that we fund people's defense.
Yeah, if you're going to impose criminal penalties on violation of a municipal ordinance, and you're going to prosecute those, then, and we do have an agreement with the public defender's office, yes.
It's a cost, it's a cost to do that, absolutely. That's what I meant about the enforcement question. I think Jan was first, you have a question?
Yeah, I remember the young lady who came in and spoke, and very passionate and excited for her, and, "Is it possible to help her meet her goal without going through an ordinance? And help her create an awareness campaign, which really allows storefront owners and retail to really put the sign in their window as a, as a good neighbor gesture without having to go through a full ordinance? It's an awareness campaign. It, it starts and it ends, and she goes to each one of them and asks them to opt in. Would you put a sign in your window?"
But she could do that on her own, though. She, we don't-
Exactly. But I don't know that she, I don't know that she has, I don't know that she's thought about that, or the team has thought about that. Maybe she can go that avenue without going through a full ordinance.
Richard?
My, my question is if, I'm sorry, to me, this is just, this is just an issue of notice. I mean, as I discussed with the, the village manager, I mean, there's a lot of thing, everyone out there should know the law. I mean, at least if you're from this country, I mean, other countries, we have visitors who don't understand these type things, and this thing might be a notice in them, but that would be very minimal. But my thought is, if we were to adopt our own ordinance, we don't have to provide for any type of criminal penalties, correct? Or any type of penalties at all, or make the penalties minimal if we're, if, excuse me, if, if we're worried about that end on the business side, and it's also another thing where we're, we as the village would not be necessarily obligated to put up these notices. We can design a, an ordinance that says that, correct?
You could, if you adopted your own ordinance, you could fashion your, your own enforcement, your own penalties, your own, it would be yours, and-
Wait a minute, I don't see any point, this is government, local government here. This is not a, this is not a high school, you know, extension program to help kids do homework. We should not, as a government, be adopting ordinances that we have no intention of enforcing. I mean, that doesn't, that, this incongruous with, with our role as, as local government.
So, notice, giving our citizens further notice of-
We don't have to adopt an ordinance to give notice. We could, there's other ways, you know, we can put the, get the word out there.
Right, but which we've never done.
Yeah, but we don't have to adopt an ordinance to do that, is my point.
We don't have to, but-
And we should.
Why would it be a bad idea to at least have at a point-of-sale, something that says, "This is wrong, you could go to jail for it"?
Well, you know what? The law is on the books already for the state, the law's on the books for the county, all right? It's been our policy not to duplicate laws that are already in place, especially considering putting something on the books that we're not going to enforce. That would make us look a little silly, I think.
Well, who said we're not going to enforce it? We can, we can-
You just said that.
No, I said, we can, we can design what the enforcement is.
All right.
I mean, the bottom is, bottom line is, alcohol is a big problem in this country. And as a local municipality, if we don't want to bring further notice or awareness to it, that's our obligation. We don't have to, we never have. We could stay the course, but I, I don't see how the problem is, and this is my analogy to the, to the village manager. Okay, we've got a, a sign out there, and it says you have to go 35 miles an hour or less. And you know what's 50, 50 feet down from that? It's something from the sheriff's office that's detecting our speed. Why is that there? Because it's giving us additional notice. Hey, you're not following the law. And someone going into a restaurant, or wherever, and I'm not even on board with the restaurant aspect of it. But the bottom line is, it's just making people more aware of what the laws are, and I don't see how that can be a harmful thing.
And this is more, I think, from the, for, for the attorney, the question is then, so I know if you're an establishment and you want to sell alcohol, you need a liquor license-
Correct.
And then, you do, by those laws, have to post, you have to be born after this particular day in order to purchase those. I know with beer and wine, you don't need a liquor license, so are those also still required to post signage?
Well, you, it's a different, it's a different level of license. They still need, you still need a beer and wine license, but it's not, it's a different, you know, you can get just beer and wine, you can have beer and wine and spirits or hard alcohol.
But part of that, in order to get your licenses, then you still have to agree to post the sign.
I believe there's a state-level requirement, I'd have to-
Go through. But every year, though, because they change every year, because now it's, if you are born on this day, you have to be born after this day. So, every year, it does change.
And you see those at your convenience stores and such?
Right. So, if we were to do something where it's a postage, or posting on there, is it's not just on everywhere that sells it, as far as like Walgreens to Costco to Publix, it's also restaurants, bars. What happens when we're at a fundraiser event in the village?
And what I was relating to you was what was requested of us. That's what was requested of us with penalty. Like the lawyer said, any derivative of that is your choice.
But to your point, the county ordinance, for example, does apply to any establishment that sells or dispenses alcoholic beverages for consumption on or off premises. So that does go to restaurants and...
Everywhere else. And then they do have to have that order?
But they have their, they also have to have the license from the state to do that as well.
So would one approach of this thing be to opt in to the county ordinance? I mean, I don't know what it says insofar as enforcement kinds of considerations are concerned.
If you do that, there are very specific and detailed notice requirements in the county ordinance. It's, there's a list of things that all these notices have to say in the, under the county ordinance. You have to make the statement about it being unlawful to purchase under 21, unlawful to sell if you're, to someone under 21. You have to post the penalties that are, the state level penalties, the misdemeanor penalties that the manager talked about. You have to post a telephone number to report those who are in violation of the law. Such telephone numbers may include but are not limited to 211 at Palm Beach County and the, alternatively, the Division of Alcohol Beverage and Tobacco. So you have to have, that's what the county ordinance requires on their notice. So it is certainly more detailed than the notice that we were discussing where if you're born before this date, you can't buy alcohol.
Right, so the idea though of raising people's awareness and giving them a sense of a consequence to not following the law, kind of a thing.
But the, you know, the other layer, the other thing about adopting the county ordinance, you know, it's very specific, it's mandatory, it provides, it requires enforcement and that would be on the village to, to, you know, require those, the particular notice to be posted and then go around and see if everyone's in compliance and those that aren't.
Sure, one of the things I don't think any of us want to do is put in place something we don't intend to enforce. I mean, that's just not good behavior on our part. It's like the stop sign discussion that the village manager and I have had about not being a traffic calming mechanism. It is for the purpose of safeguarding an intersection and that kind of stuff. So I don't know if there's words that can be put into this that would make it tailored to what we're trying to accomplish here and not get into something that is, that leads us down the road of not being able to effectively enforce it. But at the same time raises awareness. Perhaps it's worthwhile just taking a look to see if there is something there.
Well, an alternative, and I think Jan said it, said a good, an alternative that's not an ordinance, but something from this council that gives, gives the people that want to, want this to happen, because they did volunteer and said they would, they would give the store owner signs and everything. So if they went, if this is, again, a community active thing to do, passing a resolution, supporting their efforts for this posting and then letting them take that as authority and endorsement from the council of these signs and then letting them take that to the business owners and requesting the business owners post them.
On a voluntary basis?
On a voluntary basis. So it would, it would look like some, something, they would have something official from us supporting their efforts and then they would be taking their signs and requesting of the business owners to do it on a voluntary basis.
That makes sense.
All right, so is there a consensus of having staff draft a resolution to this effect?
Yes. I think that's, that's a good step.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can go, anything, anything that's going to promote more awareness of, you know, the consequences and the bad things associated with underage drinking is good in my book and I definitely would not want to see us adopt the county ordinance. I wouldn't want to adopt that as a whole and go down that road for sure.
That's too much.
All right, so...
We'll do that, we'll bring a resolution back to you that, and then when that's passed, we'll get back in touch with the young lady who came and they can go from there.
I just want to add one other comment. I think that, you know, if we empower these teens to take on this awareness campaign, I think they'll actually get the word out better than us passing an ordinance.
You're right, I agree.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay. I think that completes reports for tonight.
Nothing further from me.
Okay. Keith?
No, sir.
Okay, we're good. Okay, at this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to present your petition. Seeing no petitions, I'm closing presentation of petitions for this evening. I do not have any comment cards from, from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. If anyone would like to comment on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, so I'm closing public comment to non-agenda items and to consent agenda items. I have one modification for the regular agenda before we begin, and that is, regular agenda item R9 is pulled from the agenda. And it'll reappear at some point when it needs to reappear. The village manager will let us know. So Diane, let the record show.
I will, Mayor, thank you.
R9. Okay, so with that, Diane, can you give us consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of October 17, 2019, and council special meeting of November 7, 2019. Two, adoption resolution 1933, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing in accordance with established policy, the making of a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Said amendment represents the year-end 13th period budget adjustment and appropriates $20,500 from state revenue sharing and increases amounts budgeted in the engineering and legal department. Three, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 303 in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of $40,000 from equipment replacement PW2001 to trucks PW20TR. Four, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 303 in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of $70,000 from LaMonte Drainage PW0703 to traffic sign control cabinet PW1805. Five, approval and authorization to purchase one Toro Outcross 9060 utility vehicle from Hector Turf through the National Intergovernmental Purchase Alliance contract number 2017025 for the amount not to exceed $58,000, which is budgeted in account 303-7200-5726499, project number PR2002. Six, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with Broadcast Systems Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the purchase and installation of security cameras in Farren, Todd Robner and Bob Marcelo Parks, piggybacking GSA contract GS07F173GA. Seven, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a winter festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons Park on Saturday, December 7, 2019, from 1:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Eight, approval of a seasonal vendor permit application for Lowe's Home Improvement to sell Christmas trees and related Christmas items from November 23, 2019 through December 22, 2019 during regular business hours located at 103 South State Road 7. Nine, approval of a special event permit for Dentists of Palm Beach to hold a grand opening event and ribbon cutting ceremony located at 11151 Southern Boulevard within the Southern Palms Crossing Shopping Plaza on Saturday, December 14, 2019, from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Ten, approval of a special event permit for the School of Rock of the Palm Beaches to hold a music festival at Veterans Park on Sunday, January 26, 2020, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Eleven, adoption of resolution number 1930, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and adopting the 2020 revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Twelve, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with Jericho Traffic Controls Incorporated for traffic signal controller and cabinet upgrades by piggybacking the Palm Beach County contract number R2019-1260 for annual traffic signal contract in an amount not to exceed $147,493.50. Thirteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute final payment application number 17 with Anatom Construction Company for the cultural center expansion and improvements project PR1617 and PR1725 in the amount of $137,500. And fourteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an agreement with Urbana LLC to perform general planning and development review services for two years, which may be extended for two additional years, two additional terms of one year each.
Thank you.
May I pull a regular gen, sorry, consent agenda item number 13, please?
Okay.
And I'd like to pull number six, please.
Number six and number 13. All right, items will be pulled. If there are no other questions, I'll look for a motion for the remaining items.
Move to approve consent agenda minus item number six and 13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda was approved with the exception of agenda, consent agenda item six and 13. And with that, we'll hear, all right, you're up Lou, number six?
Yeah, the security cameras, anything in particular?
Just, I think, an opportunity to let our residents know, enhance security.
Okay, this is, this is the second purchase that we're making. The first purchase that we made was for three of our larger parks. The recreation center, the parking lot and the soccer complex, along with Camellia Park. The entire park will be covered, that's a very active park, even though they don't have, you know, organized, organized play like our ball fields. That's, this time on this order, we're basically going to be taking care of Robner Park, Farren Park, which is where the girls play their softball, and Bob Marcelo, which is another active park. So all of our, our high-profile, high-use parks are going to be covered, parking lots and the facilities. The recreation center, like you say, will be inside and out, around the perimeter, inside the corridors and then out in the parking lot. It'll cover the skate park, the basketball courts, so people should feel safe, it should help PBSO. We've already got cameras out at Commons Park around the sporting center, so if something does happen, something occurs, we'll be able to play it back and be able to help the...
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Sounds like a good thing.
Well, yeah, I think what we're doing is we're kind of biting the elephant piece at a time to try to spread the, our surveillance capability and continue to make these areas safer than they are already, so that's good. So...
You gonna make a motion?
Yes, I'll take a motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept regular, consent agenda item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item number six was approved 50. You're going to talk about, who's talking about 13?
I will.
Chris is chomping at the bit.
13 is the, is the settlement agreement with Anatom, which is the construction of the cultural center. As you know, we've, we've been at an impasse with Anatom and the total of the impasse was about $210,000. It was not completing on time, it was not installing low voltage wire for the dimming system, it was not taking delivery of the chandeliers and a few other little things, some warranty work and, and some other minor things. And we've been at an impasse, we did go to mediation this, this past week and we did settle at a, at a value of 137,500. And what that basically is, is settling on the liquidated damages being out, but not paying for the low voltage wiring and having them assign us the contract that they do have with Royal Contract Lighting out of Boston. There's a $30,000 deposit that they said that they have on that, that will be assigned to us also. All that, all the assignment documentation has been provided to us within 14 days of this approval. Our check is due to them within 30 days. We have conference call with Royal Contract Lighting tomorrow to find out what exactly it's going to take and to make sure that, you know, that $30,000 is now credited to us. If we learn anything different than what has been presented to us, that, that will, that will be a problem as it relates to this settlement, but we'll know that before it's paid out. So, you know, I never bring these to you with a, oh wow, this is a win. It's not a win. I mean, having a contractor not perform, not having chandeliers for the last year, not having, having our very first event without being able to dim the lights, without having lights in the parking lot, it's nothing that we're proud of. And I'd much rather have a contract go perfectly, get them finished on time and pay them the full $210,000. But that's not what this one was. But it's, it's the best we can bring you at this time.
Did they sign the agreement yet?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yes, they did.
So, and then besides, we talked about the low voltage lighting and the dimming lights and everything, that's already been corrected?
That's all been completed.
Completed, so the only thing left are the chandeliers.
That is correct. There's a little bit of warranty work and there's, there's some issues with the, the kind of the switches or that they call the scene selectors for the lights in the, in the rooms where the petitions can go from four rooms to, to one room. There, there's a, some hardware that goes with that, that, that the light system knows what petitions are open and what's closed, so that when, when, let's say when they're all four open, you only have to go to one switch to dim the lights, you don't have to go to all four corners. When it's, when they're all closed, it knows that they're all closed and then each switch works each room. That's not working exactly right yet, but that was part of the warranty work, I believe, money or, we had, we had charged them for that in the, in the final payment.
So this, this phone call tomorrow is to determine whether or not the chandeliers really do exist? Is that, is that right? And if they don't, then the state, statement of agreement doesn't, doesn't apply going forward?
The phone call is to determine if they exist and obviously determine that the $30,000 exists that was paid to them and that it wasn't refunded back to Anatom, so that, those are two important facts. There's rumors that they exist in California, but this company hasn't been truthful in the past, so we'll take it with a grain of salt, but hopefully we can, we can get them here and finalize that. Or at least know that we're going to go in a different direction and...
At least know where we are.
Go to a different vendor and, and get the lights.
Our goal with the conference, with the, they're in the business of selling lights, they have the shop drawings of the lights that we've wanted for over a year. Our goal is to find out tomorrow what it takes to buy lights from them.
Eliminate the middle man.
And about when they would show up. And if that can't be done tomorrow with them, then we'll have to take a different route.
And I just wanted to confirm that we don't need to hire another contractor to finish whatever work has to be done for the cultural center?
No.
Per this agreement, per this contract?
No, we don't have to hire another contractor. I mean, we, as far as when we do get chandeliers and putting them in, whether we use our own electricians or whether we hire a company to do that, we'll decide that, we'll most likely, if we have to bid it out and purchase them from somewhere else, we'll probably include the labor to install them with that bid.
But everything else is...
Yes, everything else is done.
Richard? Yeah, my only, excuse me, question is, in, in light of the issues we've had over the year and getting this done, this is, in both your and Keith's opinion, a good resolution, a business decision to end this ordeal.
Absolutely.
And the down, there's going to be no downside as far as further litigation costs and, you know, you can always potentially lose a trial, although I don't think we necessarily would, but at least this gives us finality and on, I think, reasonable terms by the taxpayers.
For all the reasons you just said, we think it's in the best interest of the village to proceed with this.
Okay, thank you.
And that is one of the things going through this, Jennifer and Mitty, we're, we're at the mediation. If you notice number, I think the second bullet item on our, on our item here, I mean, we believe we have about 100, from the notices we've gotten, notice to owners... we believe we have about 100, from the notices we've gotten, notice to owners, there's about $160,000 out there of subs that have not been paid. Well, they're all your, your local, local construction companies. So we put it in there that, you know, the monies received from us have to go to pay them first. And, and they did agree, they did agree to that in this settlement.
Good. Okay, any other questions? No further questions, look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item number thirteen was approved five zero. So that completes our consent agenda, we'll move on to the regular agenda now. Agenda item R1 is a public hearing to consider variance application 19-0068, an application by the homeowner in variance order VC-19-12. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a 0.9 feet side yard setback in lieu of the required 10 feet side yard setback for an existing place structure as required by section 26-57. And the address of the property is confidential, this is a quasi judicial process, so...
Thank you, Mayor. If you're going to be speaking to the village council on this matter, you need to be placed under oath, so if you will be testifying, please stand and raise your right hand. I'm going to have to stand right here. Thank you. Do each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And then coming back to council, any ex parte discussions regarding this matter would need to be placed on the record at this time?
The village manager.
Staff.
There's the staff.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, then we can proceed with the agenda item.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Glad you're on.
I think that at the last variance, or at the last meeting where these variance requests came up, we mentioned a soft denial type of a thing.
A what?
The soft denial type of a thing.
Okay, you're gonna use that again.
Right, so whenever I go make my recommendation, if I tug on my ear, it's going to be a soft denial, okay? So here we go.
Soft denial.
Soft denial.
Herman Barter.
The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for a .9 foot side yard setback in lieu of the required 10 foot side yard setback for an existing place structure. The applicant is seeking a 9.1 foot variance to the side setback requirement as established in code section 2657. Village Code 2632 allows for village council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist do not result of the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privileges. That literal interpretation of the provision of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, and it's the minimum variance that will make the possible and reasonable use of the land, and it's not detrimental to public welfare. This slide here shows the location of the playset. The applicant asserts that the reduction, reduced setback is necessary in order to allow for the existing play structure to remain. In addition, the applicant states that due to the arrangement of the other structures on the property, there's now, there is nowhere on the property that would allow them to install the play structure and would not require variance. The applicant further asserts that this is the minimum variance that will allow for reasonable use of the property and prevent the village code from denying the applicant an amenity commonly enjoyed by other properties. Tug, tug. Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist...
They're in a new place.
Which are not applicable to other lands. Condition is a result from actions of the applicant, will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. Literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of the rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district, and it's not minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on October 22nd, 2019, and again, staff is recommending denial of this variance, and as you can see, this play structure, the massing at the setback line is essentially the two-by-six board there, which doesn't create a whole lot of massing at the property line, and therefore that's, and severity as, as variance go, the severity of this variance is minimal at best.
I'm sorry, what did you say the, the opinionee did?
They, they recommended approval by a vote of three to one.
Three to one, okay. Do you know why the one is centered?
I do not.
No, okay. Okay, would the applicant like to make a comment at this time?
This is why I had to speak today.
So I see.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't have any comment cards for this agenda item, but anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item R1, now would be the time. Seeing that there are no comments from the public, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R1, and Selena, you're up.
I just have a question for you then, is it, did you get a permit to build the structure? Or did you have permission for, are you in an HOA, did they approve it?
No, it's not an HOA. Didn't realize that there was a need for a permit, except for sheds and other structures.
Okay.
Before, you know, I grew up in, in Millington, and this was never...
Time out, time out. Can you please come up?
Yeah.
Because we need to have you on the record, if you're going to, you know, respond.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I can jump in here, this is a confidential record, so she does not need to state her name or address.
No, don't, oh, yeah, don't, yeah, don't break the confidentiality.
So we were just talking about is that you didn't know you needed a permit to build the structure in the first place?
No.
So you didn't get any permission or anything, okay. And then, do you have any documentation from your neighbors to say that it's not an issue they don't mind? Okay.
She wrote something. She was going to come to the exhibition, I mean, but...
Do we, do we have that? Do we have a copy of that?
I do not, I do not have a copy of that.
She sent it in, you guys.
Well, on the other side of that, do we have anything from the neighbors complaining about this? How did this come within our realm of?
It was a...
It's, it was a code enforcement discovered this, correct?
Sorry.
Okay.
The neighbors play on it, I mean...
Somebody, what happened?
It said the neighbor's kids play on it.
No, but do you know how, how this came about?
Um...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
This happened, they came across it?
Yeah.
Nobody called and complaining about it?
No.
Okay.
No.
For the record, it would be great if we had the letter that she said the neighbor submitted.
Yeah, it would be. I, I saw in the application, she made a statement that her neighbor, or that her neighbors actually play on this play structure. I did not see a letter from the, from the neighbor stating that this is not an issue.
My husband's been dealing with it, so, and he's on shift.
You, you can vouch for a statement on the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Right, right.
Well, was it a separate letter, or was it just a statement on the application?
I'm not sure, my husband submitted everything.
Okay. Who was next? So you're on the trigger, you got your finger on the trigger.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just thinking about it. Okay, so I'm looking at the picture here, and, and one of the considerations, one of the reasons that setbacks exist is to prevent one neighbor from encroaching on another neighbor's right to be able to see outside their property. And I'm looking at this fence, which is a barrier that covers like 90%.
95%.
Of, of the, of the visibility anyway, and, and so from, from my understanding of a reason for a setback, the, the fence is more of a problem than the bit of the playset that stands above that, that's within the 10-foot setback. So I would, I would be surprised if someone, yeah, would complain about that, and that doesn't even consider the fact that the kids from next door come over and play on it.
Mm-hmm.
Another thing entirely, so...
You have another question, Selena?
No.
No. Any other questions for members on council? If not, is there someone who would like to make a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve agenda item R1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R1 was approved five zero.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
Okay.
Actually, can we, maybe something that we can...
Talk about then, because if the issue was that, the way our code is written is that if it just says for sheds or other things, if we could be more specific on that so that things are not being built and then variances coming in, can...
It says sheds and play structures.
So it does say play structures.
That's a special, or that's, that's an accessory structure that enjoys the reduced side and rear yard setbacks.
Jeff?
So some time ago, I, I saw a list of, of code, codes that impact the average citizen frequently, and I think it's posted, you can actually get to it on the website, and the more we can get that information out to people, the better informed they're going to be, and the more likely, or less likely they are to unintentionally violate and put themselves in a non-compliant situation. So anything we can do to push that information out even more, I think would be helpful.
I know that our community development director, Rob Hill, has a outreach, it's a booklet, a frequently asked questions, or frequent violations, and I, I don't know, aside from that, what he does.
We run it in the Village Voice every once in a while, too. We did just recently.
Yeah, that's where I think I, I saw that, that letter, I mean, that single page, which, which is really interesting because there were some things on there I didn't know as I looked down it, so...
And I think that's my concern, is that people keep coming in for variances because they're not sure, I mean, so maybe if it's just informing, the HOAs don't give approval because they still need to come through us, but if it is clear on that, that way there's less of these issues coming in, because if a different neighbor moves into her now next door, and their kids don't come over and play, and it becomes an issue, now we're dealing with it, so...
Maybe an issue, but she's already got the variance approved, so...
I think the good idea is, if you're going to build something on your property or put an improvement in, find out if you need a permit or not beforehand, I mean, just assume, I just go by the assumption that if I have to do anything, get a permit for it. You need a new air conditioning, you need a permit for it, just think you need a permit for everything, and if you don't, bonus, I mean...
When in doubt, ask.
When in doubt, shout, go ahead.
Just to go follow up on that caution, so there really is significant penalties to not having permits. What we run into all the time is people getting to closings and wanting to sell their house, and the, the title companies always do a search, is everything permitted? And if it's not permitted, eh, they don't go to closing until it's taken care of. And it is a significant problem on a lot of closings. So, I mean, if that alone is, is worth making sure your permits are all up to date, because we, we deal with that every week.
And I think the other issues is that I run in, that I find is, when they go to planning and zoning, and they'll say, well, we deny, but go to council, or this is our thought. So just as long as we can alleviate some of that as well, so it's not an inconvenience to our residents, too.
Typically, their first point of contact with these types of issues is code enforcement. The conversations are initiated a majority of the time through code enforcement.
Okay, good, all right. Agenda item R2 is a public hearing for a second reading, an adoption of ordinance number 996, an approval of application number 19-0087, an application by Urban Design Killday Studios. The applicant is seeking the rezoning of two tracts of land totaling approximately 13.14 acres, from Palm Beach County's agricultural residential to zoning district to the village, Village of Royal Palm Beach's public ownership zoning district. Located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7, this is a quasi judicial process, and we have to have folks want it.
Mayor, let me place everyone under oath who's going to be speaking on this item. Each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And ex parte disclosures from the council?
None.
None. And the manager?
Thank you, Mayor, then we can proceed.
Great, thank you again. In reviewing the proposed rezoning of the parcels to the Village of Public Ownership zoning district, village staff considered compatibility with Jason Lanis's consistency with the village's comprehensive plan in conformance with the public ownership zoning district development standards in section 2691. Staff also considered pod eight in relation to the overall proposed master plan for this area. The local planning agency considered this application on September 4th, 24th, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The village council considered ordinance 996 on first reading on October 17th, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of ordinance 996 on second reading. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
You have to read the title.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance 996, ordinance of the village council, Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, providing for the rezoning of certain real property within the corporate limits of the village, consisting of two parcels of land comprising a total of 13.144 plus or minus acres, more or less located on the south side of Southern Boulevard and approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7, formerly known as Southern Boulevard Properties Pod 8, providing that these parcels are real property, which are more specifically described herein, shall be assigned the village zoning designation of PO, public ownership, providing that the zoning map of the Village of Royal Palm Beach is amended to reflect the proper designation for these parcels of real property, providing conflicts caused severability clause, ineffective data, and for other purposes.
Okay, very good, all right. Would the applicant like to make comments? So you're satisfied with the, how it was presented by staff? Okay. I do not have any comment cards from the public for agenda item R2, but if anyone would like to comment from the public, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R2. Any further comments from members on council? This is the second reading. No further comments, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R2 was approved on second reading. Okay, agenda item R3 is a public hearing pursuant to section 163-3225 sub 1, Florida statutes to consider application number 19-0120, requesting approval of development agreement between the village and the developer for a proposed 401-unit multifamily residential development on approximately 29.356 acres parcel of land located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .29 miles west of State Road 7. And, Bradford, you're on.
Great, thank you again, Mayor. The applicant is requesting approval of a development agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and the developer of Southern Boulevard Properties Pod 2, and of course with sections 163, .3220 through 163, 3243 of Florida statutes, the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act. The developers proposing minimal floor areas, which are less than those required by Village Code in the RM14 zoning district at section 2686, 4H, the subsection allows for a reduction in the floor area requirements if the project developer enters into such agreement in accordance with the act. This slide illustrates the difference between the unit sizes and what is required by code. There is a range of one-bedroom units at 756 square feet through 849 square feet, with a difference of 240 with the lower-end units, or the smaller units, and 151 for the larger single-family units. And again, 1,098 single fa, uh, square feet and 1,200 square feet for the two bedrooms. And the three-bedroom apartments or townhouse-style apartments meet the three-bedroom requirements. Village Code also specifies a minimum average unit size of 1,200 square feet for each building within the development. The applicant is proposing minimum average building size for the building listed here on this slide. So as you can see, some of these buildings may contain more single-family, or I'm sorry, one-bedroom units, and the others, as they get more in square footage, may have more of a diversity. Here are the Southern Boulevard Properties Phase 1 North, AKA Town Southern Apartments, they're smaller units for the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, are actually smaller than what is being proposed here tonight. I wanted to provide these for comparison sakes.
These are units that have already been...
They, they're...
...in development.
Yes, sir, that, the one that's, that's there now.
Okay, so it's, okay.
And then here is the pod three approved unit size, go back here. So there, on the, the smaller units in the pod three did get a developers' agreement for 795, which is larger than what is being proposed here tonight. So this one may be considered to be in between the one that is out there now and pod three as far as your unit sizes go.
Okay.
Okay. The applicant contends that the proposed development consists of multifamily homes with 13 separate buildings and plentiful community features such as pool, clubhouse, fitness center, vegetable garden, outdoor dining areas, playfield, picnic area, tot lot, dog park, as well as numerous walking trails, bocce court, enjoys in order to achieve the desired amount of... Botched court enjoys in order to achieve the desired amount of amenities and spacing for the proposed development. A reduction in the size of several of the multifamily units is being requested at the time. The reduction in the size of these units is needed to address the demand within the current housing market, as families and individuals seek to maximize their relationship with their local communities and outdoor experiences, rather than desiring to live in housing with excessive level of spacing and impervious land area. The local planning agency considered this application on October 22, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Staff is recommending denial of application 1930 and its associated developer's agreement. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make any comments?
I don't think so. It's the same issue.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Ally Palmer with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, tonight representing the applicant, Tuttle Development. We are, my presentation is essentially identical to Bradford, so I won't bore you with that. However, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the items he had mentioned. So this is very similar to what you've seen before with Pod 3. We were in front of you earlier in the spring with the developer agreement request for the smaller units, and I believe Related also had the same approval for what we identify as Pod 1 outside of the master plan. And again, the trade-off here is really all the amenities that the developer is providing within the site and also overall through the master plan. We really envisioned these residents taking benefit of all these wonderful bonuses they're going to get within their communities, such as these very large clubhouses and outdoor amenities, also being able to be in a multimodal-type master plan area where they can be outside more and connect to all the other mix of uses in the master plan as well. And that's all part of that justification you see in the development agreement. And that's why we're before you tonight, once again. So we appreciate any questions you might have. As you know, Brian Tuttle is here, and we'll happy, be happy to answer.
Okay. I do not have any public comment cards submitted for agenda item R3, but if anyone from the public would like to comment on this item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R3. And members from council?
So the offset, or the comment about the quality of the amenities and the extensive nature of the amenities that are being proposed, fading into a young professional lifestyle kind of a thing, where having places to gather and be with friends and an active lifestyle is, I think, part of what we heard before. And that was with the first approval that we did, I think it was a Phase 1. So having visited there recently, I've got to say, if the amenities we're talking about for Pod 3 are on par with the amenities that are at Town Southern Apartments, that makes sense to me, and given that we've kind of approved something along this line two other times.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
We hope to have, excuse me, we hope to have better, I believe, if I'll talk for the developer.
Okay, just a little confirmation on that.
And then I'll say is because I descended both times on those, and I will do again just because the units are so small on that and because of the variance on that.
Yeah, and to speak to Commissioner Hamara, our lake is two acres bigger than the lake on Related, and our clubhouse is 4,000 square feet bigger than the clubhouse on Related. So in line with the big, you know, amenities.
Bigger and better. One of the things that I, I'm curious about this, too, in looking at the single-bedroom apartment at, I can, it's not a catchy name, by the way, Town Southern. I was, I was not, it was an accommodation that made sense for, you know, a young, single professional and that kind of thing. But what I was impressed with was the size of the balcony area. And it is a balcony area that you could actually do something with, and hopefully that's going to be a similar kind of a configuration as well as part of it, all of which plays to that lifestyle, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Yeah, and we'll talk a little bit more about it, but we're using the same architect, which is MSA, and they designed that. And it's, while the facade is different, a lot of the layouts are very similar.
All right, I just want to, just to give some context to this. It's interesting, I think over the last, I don't know, six or seven years perhaps, we've had other projects, units like this, developed in the village. And what was interesting is the marketplace is driving this sizing thing. You know, we have a code, but when we put that code together, it was, you know, what do we think are a good size for these units to be? But the reality is, what will the market bear, and what does the market drive? And obviously, we want to see these kind of projects to be successful when they're in, hit the marketplace. And it's been, these projects have been very successful. As you mentioned, the, you know, having these high-end rentals or multifamily dwelling units with the amenities that come with that only enrich that sub-area, but overall, it really enriches the community as a whole. I just want to kind of just put that in context, and I understand where you're coming from, Selena. If there are no further comments, then from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R3 was approved for one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
The market shifts again.
You know what I always say, the market will do what the market will do. Okay. Agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application 19-020, an application by Urban Design Kill Day Studios, an approval of variance order VC-19-11 to allow 163 tandem parking spaces to be counted for multifamily residential development, to allow nine parking spaces to be used exclusively by the U.S. Postal Service during certain times, and to reduce the number of required parking spaces from the site from 946 to 812 for a variance of 134 parking spaces as required by Village Code for a property located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial item, so we need to have folks want it.
Thank you, Mayor. If you're going to be speaking to the village council on this item, I need to place you under oath. Each of you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury, testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And back to council for ex parte.
Village staff, manager.
Okay, thank you, we can proceed.
Great. The applicant has requested a variance from Village Code of ordinance at section 26, or 2349B1, general access, at subparagraph B, in order to allow the use of 163 tandem parking spaces for a multifamily residential development, where Village Code only allows tandem parking spaces to be counted as required parking spaces. For single-family residences, subparagraph B requires that each parking space shall be accessible without having to drive over or through, wait, sorry, I lost my place, oh, any other parking spaces except for single-family residents, wherein one space may be located behind another space, also known as tandem parking spaces or driveways. This variance is approved would allow for 134 tandem parking spaces to count toward the required parking. Furthermore, the applicant's request, the applicant's request is to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 946 to 812 for a variance of 134 parking spaces. Those are the tandem parking spaces that are going to be counted towards the required parking spaces if this variance's request is approved, which is a result of the use of the tandem parking spaces. It should be noted, however, that if the variance to allow tandem parking spaces is granted, then the site will meet the village's parking requirements for the development at 946. Additionally, the applicant has requested a variance from section 2351D to allow nine parking spaces to be used exclusively by the U.S. Postal Service during certain times, where Village Code requires that such spaces be available for residents and guests at all times. Village Code allows the village council to grant variances to the parking code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are not applicable to other lands. Special conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. Literal interpretation of the code would deprive the applicant of the rights enjoyed by other lands. Minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the property, and the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning code. The applicant contends that although the code does not allow the use of tandem parking spaces, there is no way to prevent them, prevent the use of them by future residents when garage apartments are developed. Required additional parking spaces with no consideration when given to the tandem parking spaces will result in excess parking of the project, proposed project. The proposed variance will reduce the environmental impacts and provide more flexible design options and open space. Village staff is not in support of this variance, because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist. Condition is a result from the actions of the applicant, and will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. Literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of the rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on October 22, 2019, recommended approval by a vote of three to one. Staff is recommending denial of application 1893 and the adoption of variance order 1902. However, if village council does choose to approve the parking variance, village staff would like to recommend a condition of approval. The applicant has provided an alternative parking plan. The alternative parking plan shows the areas in which the additional parking spaces can be provided in the event parking becomes a problem on the site. The condition would require that bonding of the construction of the alternative parking plan prior to final plat approval. Village staff shall review the onsite parking once the development has reached 93% occupancy, determine if the applicant must construct the alternative parking plan. If village staff determines that the regular spaces are not needed, then the bond shall be released.
So this graph you're showing us, those areas in yellow are, would be the additional requirement?
Yes, sir.
If such a requirement? What determines that, though? How do we?
We go out and evaluate it. We would speak to residents, we would speak to the management staff.
See how's work, how's it really working?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we do a reality check?
Right.
Okay.
And we would do it, and that would be our method. We wouldn't want to incur any expense for the village to have somebody go out and actually do a study. You know, we know when a parking, when a parking lot is functional and when a parking lot is not.
After a certain percent occupancy.
Right, 93%.
Selena?
So I understand the part with the designated parking spaces at certain times for the U.S. Postal Service, so that part. If, just for clarification, because we do have so many units in there now, and most people have two vehicles that are there, so we can prevent people from driving on each other's property, or double parking, or blocking in. You're saying is that these yellow sections here are going to be reserved for additional parking in the future if it is needed, correct?
What's going to happen is, is these areas are going to be programmed for other types of uses, current, you know, right off the bat. The one at the lower-left corner, that's going to be a dog run.
Okay.
And in the event that this does become a problem, then the dog run is then converted to parking.
To a parking lot.
And then, you know, there's other green space areas, not desirable, to parking spaces.
So interesting, so all the amenities that we just talked about that we get because of the variance for the additional units, we're now taking away for parking in the event that we do need them? Just wanted clarification. Please, Mr. Tuttle.
Whoa, 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 not yet, not yet. Relax, relax. You done, Selena?
Yes, I just want to, I actually just want a clarification on that. I mean, I'm just confused as far as the parking and what's set aside, and what is that going to be used for right now? And then, I understand the determination is when we need it and the process that goes through, so once it is more occupied, and then a determination is needed, studies then decided when we do need those extra spaces, so that we do, and I understand that you have space set aside for those extra spaces. My only concern is, do we have enough to begin with, or how long before we start cutting into the green space?
Okay, good.
This slide that I have up shows the areas that are being counted towards the recreation obligation. The dog run is not included in that. When we, early on in our conversations about recreation obligations, we said, your recreation obligation land dedication is not going to be underneath the power lines. So we applied that also to this site, but there is going to be a dog run recreation space underneath the easement, but not directly under the power lines. So that is one area that is not part of the recreation obligation. But if you look on this, on the slide, this area here will be, and then this area here will be. So put in your, take a mental picture of those two areas, and I'll go back to.
Oh, and I understand the land dedication that we've done, and I appreciate all of...
So these are the areas here that are circled that I just mentioned.
I'm just thinking, when you take away Fido's Run, what is that conversation like?
That's, that's not the only dog park that they have onsite.
Okay, that would be a good thing.
Okay, Richard.
Yeah, my understanding of the slide you have up now, Bradford, is basically this is just what staff would recommend as a contingency plan if this is approved, so that we don't get into the situation where we've got people packed in like rats, and there's nowhere for them to park. We don't want that, and this will alleviate that if necessary.
If reality is, it's not working.
Correct. And now, go ahead. And we would certainly, as part of this study, we wouldn't say if there's a small issue going on with parking spaces, say, you need to park these one, two, three, four big, large parking fields. We would evaluate, you know, maybe ones that, in areas that aren't programmed for lands, for recreation, we would say, add 10 there. Down in the power lines, make the dog run a little bit smaller, put in 20 parking spaces, something along those lines.
I just have, I'm trying to understand the math. If I understood what you're saying is that if the variance of the 134 parking spaces are accommodated by providing tandem parking?
That's correct.
So at the end of the day, the number of spaces equals what we, what the code requires. The difference is, though, a large number of these spaces would be in tandem format.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I think, so was first.
Yeah, so the majority of those tandem, or are all of those tandem garage associated?
The 134 are the tandem parking spaces that are behind a garage, kind of in your driveway scenarios.
So you would have a car inside the garage, and then possibly a car on the driveway approaching the garage?
Correct, right.
Okay.
So we have this amazing clubhouse, and small living, smallish living spaces. I'm going to have a party in the clubhouse, and I'm going to invite 50 of my closest friends. Where, is there enough parking around the clubhouse to accommodate them? Because those friends aren't obviously going to be able to tandem park in my neighbors' driveways, right? Right.
So, if I may, as part of our parking, our parking formula, so we take the number of units, the size of those number of units, and those sizes translate into a number of parking spaces. One bedroom, one and a half, two bedroom, two, three, you know, you get the point. Then that gives us a number. And then we say, all right, 20% of that needs to be provided for, for your guest parking. So if you look at this slide here, I'm jumping ahead just a little bit. This here is your clubhouse, and a short distance away, you then have a field of parking spaces. They're not directly, I mean, I'm going to admit, they're not directly on the sidewalk into the clubhouse, but all situations aren't like perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make comments? You seem like you were a little anxious to do that, no?
I just wanted to provide some answers for you. Let me see if I can get to my presentation. Okay, so I won't go through all my slides here, but hopefully I can answer some of the questions you've had. So, let's go back up one. Okay, so as Bradford mentioned, we are asking for a variance of 134 spaces that includes the USPS postal parking spaces. But it also includes the tandems that are behind all of the parking garages. But just to give you a little bit more detail, this is the site plan you'll see coming up in the next item. There's two different types of garages in this development. There's the garages that are in the apartments on the first floor. There's the garages that are in the apartments on the first floor. They each have a parking space behind them, so, well, I'm sorry, not all of them, but most of them have a parking space behind them. And so, we are looking at 83 tandems. There's 86 garages, and 83 of them have a tandem space behind, so there's three garages that don't. So every single one of those garages has a tandem space right behind it, just like at your house, how you have a parking space behind your parking garage. And just to kind of put that in perspective, the apartments by themselves require 130 guest spaces, because we have to put, as Bradford mentioned, it's a 20% guest rate. So out of 103 guest spaces, you're looking at 83 of them being behind a parking garage, whereas the remaining 47 are out in the surface parking lot areas. So that's one way to kind of understand that. So really, it's being allocated more so for a guest, really, behind your parking garage. And then with the townhomes, even though these are apartment-style townhomes, they are for rent, they're not fee simple, they will act, as far as parking is concerned, identical to what you would see in a fee simple neighborhood, where you have a townhome, you have a parking garage on the first floor, and the person that lives in that townhome therefore has beyond their parking garage two parking spaces in their driveway behind the parking garage. So 40 of the units, or eight buildings, have garages with tandem parking or parking driveways behind their garage. So even though they're tandems, because these are rentals, they're not, it will act just like a fee simple townhome, where you have, you know, those will be their own two spaces behind their parking garage. So I think that's all I wanted to add here. This just shows you those areas that I was just discussing on the screen. The townhomes are to the left, and the apartments are to the right, so you can see where the tandems are, right directly outside of the units. And this was the alternative parking plan that Bradford had mentioned, the three areas that would be converted if needed, if the study deemed that there was a parking shortage after the apartment complex was fully occupied. And that's all I had for you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, so for the record, the applicant is agreeing to the condition of approval?
The condition for the alternative parking plan, yes, if it's deemed necessary, correct.
Okay.
And thank you, I appreciate the explanation of it, because that's where it got into where you're now eliminating the parking spaces, but you're adding more units, and so thank you.
Right.
All right, I did not have any public comment cards on agenda item R4, but if anyone would like to comment from the public, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R4, and take any further comments from council, if there are any, and if there are none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved 5-0.
Do we need to specify that condition?
Oh, with the condition?
The, it was already read in, right?
The condition was written in?
It's written in already, so
But the motion should refer to the condition of approval.
Let me, I can maybe go to an abbreviated in my presentation where it states... Okay, so if you look on your screen, whoever is making the motion, this is essentially what is in the variance order.
So that's really clear.
Alternative parking plan, right?
Do you just want me to make it generic?
Give it a try.
All right. I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four with the alternative parking spaces provided in the backup.
Second.
Is that okay, Keith?
As that language that's in the backup matches the language that's in the draft order, so I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. All right, we have another motion, another second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved again, 5-0, ensuring that the condition of approval for additional parking if needed was in fact included, okay? Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item R5, is a public hearing to consider application 19-019, an application by Urban Design Kill Day Studios, and resolution 19-31 confirming council action. The applicant is seeking site plan architectural approval for a 401-unit multifamily residential development, in addition to a landscape waiver from section 26-86, sub 4, sub E, as allowed by section 26-61, sub I, to allow the required 15-foot landscape buffer adjacent to interior lot lines to be reduced to five feet adjacent to the north property line. For a property located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7, this is a quasi judicial item, so do we need to swear?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, is there anybody additional that will be speaking? Everybody's already been sworn in, you're still sworn in. I do need to ask for ex parte on this item, because I haven't asked for those.
Manager?
Staff.
All right, then everybody is sworn, ex parte's are disclosed, we can proceed. Thank you.
Explain this one, please.
Well, I'm going to skip the introduction in my presentation, because you just gave it
I had it, okay.
The summary of this, but here is an illustration of the location of Pod 2 in relation to the other pods within this development. The 401 units will be divided into 15 three-story buildings and 11 two-story townhouse-style apartments. The proposed site plan has six building types, with unit counts ranging from 11 units to 22 units per building. The apartments in this development range from one bedroom and one bath, to three bedrooms to two and a half bath. The site will also contain a 3.93 acre lake for onsite retention. In addition, the site plan provides 14.57 acres of green and open space. Access to the site will be from Southern Boulevard via New Bridge, over the C-51 Canal, and future access to State Road 7 south of Lowe's. The applicant has requested a landscape waiver from section 26-86, 4E, as allowed by section 26-61I, to allow the required 15-foot landscape buffer adjacent to interior lot lines to be reduced to five feet adjacent to the north property line shown here in green. The buffer is adjacent to a 20-foot easement, and all required landscape buffer material will be accommodated within the five feet of the landscape buffer.
Can you go over that again? I'm not
Yes. On the north property line, shown here
Which is the green?
Yes, sir.
We see?
Yes. They have a five-foot landscape buffer, but just north of that is a 20-foot easement.
Okay.
So the distance separation is 25.
Okay, that's what I thought you said. Just wanted to make sure I heard that right.
And all the landscape materials will be provided in that five feet. Village Code requires for recreation space are 10 acres of recreation space for every 1,000 residents. Each dwelling unit generates two and a half residents per Village Code. That's based on the proposed 401 multifamily dwelling units. This development has a 10.025 acre recreation obligation. Section 2675H2 allows for a credit for private open space, where up to 50% of the required recreation area can be provided as private space to the residents of the subdivision. The applicant is proposing to provide a total of 2.984 acres of private recreation onsite, a total of 29.8% of the project's recreation obligation. The required private recreation activities throughout the site include, again, an exercise trail, summer kitchen, a playground, a swimming pool, and bike paths for bicycling and jogging. Other activities now required by, provided in the community include, other activities provided are outdoor dining, cooking areas, community garden, volleyball, dog run, bocce court, horseshoe court, fire pit, and a lake overlook, which will be programmed with waterfront activities. The applicant is also offering to pay a fee in lieu of dedication of land to the village for 1.816 acres, or 18% of the project's recreation obligation. The Village Code allows for a fee in lieu of dedication of land, and the applicant is proposing $302,307 per acre fee in lieu of payment for the 1.81 acres, a total of $549,103.92. We rounded up on that. The applicant will also be dedicating
Checking to see
5.225 acres of land totaling 52.1% of the remaining 52% recreation obligation. The 5.22 acres will be part of the Pod 8, which is intended to be the receiving area for the recreation obligations for Pod 2, 3, and 4. And here are some of the recreation amenities. Here you see a dog park and a portion of the bike trail. This is an illustration of the dog park area and a portion, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is the central recreation area, which is 41,000 square feet, which is just shy of one acre, where you have what looks to be a soccer park or just a active ball field. This is an illustration of a clubhouse and pool deck and pavilion. Community gardens and exercise trail around the lake. You can see here, this is what the community garden plots are intended to look like.
Community gardens? As in them growing things?
Right.
Oh, okay.
It's an interesting concept.
Yeah.
And it seems to be something that is coveted. This is an illustration of the horseshoe court, and fire pit, lake overlook, and bocce court. Okay, so, and then going on into the architecture, here you see the architecture of these buildings, where you have some stonework, tile roofs, some shutters. Here's the front elevation of the townhouse units, and here is the, this is the clubhouse. These are the, what would you call them, the structures that are around the pool, the In reviewing this petition, village staff considered conformity with the Village of Royal Palm Beach's zoning code pertaining to the multifamily residential zoning district, RM14. Specifically, the proposed project meets the requirements of multifamily RM14 zoning district as it relates to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, aside from the parking, and landscape area variances and waivers that have been, are part of these applications. The building height. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on October 22, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make any comments?
I'm going to be quick, because my kids are in the parking lot.
Okay.
Compelling statement.
I won't, I'll try not to repeat too much of Bradford's, of course, once again. So, site plan, just some items on access. Access will be off of State Road 7, I'm sorry, coming off of State Road 7 through Erica Boulevard, as you may remember with the roadway plans we presented earlier this year, part of the Lowe's Road package. We have Erica Boulevard going east-west, and we have Tuttle Boulevard going north to southern. And this particular pod will be able to be accessed from both. You'll come into the development, you have gates to your left and your right with guest access as well. And then we will have an emergency access only into Pod 7, the school site, to the east for fire access if needed.
What's the State Road 7?
It will ultimately go out to State Road 7, yes, because it will go through the school site, come back up to Erica Boulevard, and out through State Road 7, yes, to the new signal. Recreation, I think Bradford did a great job going through each of those wonderful elements, so I won't repeat myself there, or repeat him. As far as the clubhouse is concerned, these are the proposed elevations. As we mentioned, it's a two-story, very large clubhouse, programmed with many, many different components for the residents. They can have groups there, large groups there, they can also use it as office space, they can have a gym environment on the second floor, there's even a playroom for kids, while the parents might want to go and do whatever class that might be held at the facility. So very large clubhouse, and a great place for them to all get some socializing in. Then, these are the same elevations that Bradford showed you earlier of the apartments. You can see the stone treatment on the elevations that carries through on each of the buildings with the pitched roofs and the tile roofs. And again, that carries through on the townhomes as well, but that's, of course, a two-story structure. And that actually concludes my site plan presentation, so unless you have any questions for me and Brian.
Before Ally leaves, and before we leave the apartment, we need to talk about two little things. Number one, this will be the last time you see Ally.
Where's Ally going?
After four years, I'll let her explain, but she's been doing a great job, but this is it, so why don't you tell them?
So, yes, I'm sad to say that I will be leaving Royal Palm Beach and UDKS. Today is actually my last day, well, tomorrow will be my last day in Royal Palm Beach. Will be, my family and I are moving to Tallahassee, so we will be up there starting over Thanksgiving break, and so I did want to say goodbye, goodnight, and that's why my family is out in the parking lot, because we're down to one car right now, so.
We're ready to go, right? Well, listen, it's been wonderful, you're working with the village for these years, and we wish you the best, and enjoy.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. It's been a wonderful opportunity, so.
The second thing I wanted to bring up is, as Bradford explained, we're buying out, potentially buying out 1-point acres of rec site. In conversations with Bradford, one of the options we will present, and it's clearly an option to the commission, is in the activity center, we're thinking of putting one to two acres of rec in the middle of that site, and that rec would be an open-to-the-public type rec, where we would have maybe, as we've said so many times on the activity center, concerts, or yogas, or different types of events that would be open to the public for them to come and enjoy. We haven't nailed that down yet, but we just wanted to make you alert of that, that we may do that, instead of buying out the rec, to provide actual rec space for the residents. And it's a benefit to the village, because that would be open to the entire public versus the rec space in the apartments would just be open to the apartment recs. And along those lines, you know, we're studying different activity centers throughout the state of Florida to see what works and doesn't work. We've recently hired the broker who did all the leasing for Dania Point, for Doral City Center. He was the original broker for City Place, and he did Disney's new town center. So he's got a lot of really good contacts with some really high-end retail center, soft goods, and some really nice restaurant-type people, and we got some really exciting things we think that are going to really make it exciting for you to see what we're going to do in that rec center. But again, part of that, or one of the main things, will be that center kind of open rec space. You know, one of the ideas we're bouncing with is we're going to have a quarterly, we're going to change an event, like during the winter, we're going to have an outdoor ski, ice skating rink, you know, and stuff like that will change every quarter, like we would do a quarter of that, or we do a quarter of a petting zoo, or we, every quarter it changes, keeping the interest up of the residents to come in and see what's going on this quarter. But I just wanted to touch on it, again, that's all up to the option and the pleasure of the village, but I just wanted to make, me and Bradford had talked, we wanted to just make sure where we might do that, so.
I think there are a couple of questions. Selena?
I just want a clarification on that. So are you referring to the 1.816 acres, which is the 549,103?
Yes.
That's what you're referring, so that may not be the payment, you would then actually do something with the land?
I would give you public space for it.
Okay.
And that public space would be located in the
Activity Center?
Yes, yes, sir. Kind of that we've talked about?
Yes, sir.
Commercial area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R5, but if anyone from the public would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment for agenda item R5, and look for further comments from members on council.
No, I was going to make a motion, but I wanted
If there are no comments, we'll take a motion.
I'd actually say, and Ally did an amazing job for you, Mr. Tuttle. I know you've been in here quite frequently, and she's been quite the liaison for you, so with that, I will make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R5 was approved five-zero. Okay. Agenda item R6 is a public hearing for first reading, and approval of ordinance number 993, amending chapter twenty-one, twenty-one dash seven, article two, right-of-way regulations to conform this article to recent state law changes regarding communications facilities, and especially wireless facilities, that may be placed or maintained in the village rights of way.
Thank you, Mayor. You more or less just read the title. You'll recall, the village adopted a couple of years ago, a pretty comprehensive revision to your right-of-way code. This past legislative session, Senate Bill 1000 was signed into law, which created a number of additional preemptions on local government ability to regulate its rights of way regarding communication providers, and the focus is on wireless technology, because that is the direction that this is going. But the ordinance brings your code into compliance with the current state of the law. We amended some definitions to bring them into conformance. One of the pieces of the code that's been on the books for a long time, and we require as a precondition to being allowed to apply for a permit, that a provider registers with the village. The registration used to be annually, it went to every other year. The new, one of the new things that this law did is limits registration renewals to every five years. And it limits, basically, all we can ask of them is their name, contact information, and proof of insurance.
That's, that's, that's the exercise for re-registering?
Correct. You can't, you can't get into their FCC stuff, you can't get into the facilities that already exist, you can't ask for inventories or maps, you can't do any of that. In terms of permitting itself, there are new restrictions on permitting, especially with new utility poles and new wireless facilities, and small wireless facilities is a defined term, and it's defined in terms of the size of the antenna that goes on the pole. We can't restrict placement of new poles to put in small wireless facilities. There are limited design criteria that the statute does allow us to regulate, and those are in the ordinance, but it, you know, it's things like, you know, if they're putting in a new utility pole, it has to look like existing utility poles that are already in that right-of-way. It talks about use of stealth applications. You know, an example of that is, you're starting to see more of this, where people will wrap their ground equipment, the boxes have pictures of things on them.
Right.
Yeah, so, we're allowed to do that. We're still allowed to require permits for things like excavations, and if it's going to disturb a sidewalk or a road, then they, there's still advanced permitting requirements that we have. We're not allowed, on the administration side, we're not allowed to collect or require payment of a security fund. We're still allowed to have a performance bond requirement, but, you know, every year, this just seems to get chipped away more and more, so, you know, this...
So, in essence, we've got to modify our ordinance to be, to come in line with the new state.
You know, one of the other things that the statute that was passed this year, it provides for, it specifically now provides for civil penalties and attorney's fees against jurisdictions who do not conform to the preemption regulations. So, yeah.
Okay, welcome to the...
That's a, that's a ten-thousand-foot overview of the document.
Right.
And that's...
So, this is a great example of the preemption stuff that's going on up there.
Indeed, this is one of the best.
It is, it is really a good example of a bad thing.
And you'll notice, you know, in defining as a fact and the whereas clauses, you know, typically, we put language in there that we believe this is in the best interest of the village. That is not in this ordinance, but it does say that we believe it will conform to state law.
Well, we don't want to get fined by the state, so we need to be conforming, yeah.
Or pay attorney's fees.
Right.
Right.
Any further comments? Any comments from members on council? I do not have any comment cards from the public on agenda item R6, but if anyone from the public would like to comment? Okay, seeing...
Sure.
Seeing none, did you want to add something?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R6. If there are no further comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item R6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that we actually approved five-zero, agenda item R6, for the first reading. Agenda item R7 is a public hearing for a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 995, amending chapter 15.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, landscaping and vegetation management. To add language regarding a state law exemption to local government regulation of tree trimming, pruning, removal, replacement, and mitigation requirements on residential properties under certain circumstances. Boy, that sounds mysterious.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is second reading, and this is another amendment to the Village Code based on legislation that was passed in this session, that limits our ability to require a permit for removal of a tree on property. There is a change in the document from first reading, and that is, we revised the language in peregrine F3 on page two, to refer to the village's tree planting program and agreement with the property owner.
Okay. I see no light from council members. This is the second reading. If there are no comments, I'll look for a motion. Oh, before I look for a motion, I do not have any comment cards from the public, but if anyone from the public would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R7, and look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number R7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R2 was approved five-zero for the second reading. Okay, agenda item R8 is a public hearing for second reading and adoption of ordinance number 997, amending chapter 26, zoning at section 26-40. Minor amendments to previously approved site plans in order to increase the percentage of previously approved landscaping material species that may be substituted for different species through the minor site plan modification process.
This changes the ten percent maximum to twenty percent.
Twenty percent? It gives them a little more...
More reasonable.
More flexibility there.
That's correct, sir, thank you.
That's it.
Okay. This is the second reading. If there are no comments from members of council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R8.
Second.
All right, before I do take the vote, I do not have any comment cards for agenda item R8, but if anyone would like to comment from the public, now would be the time. Seeing none, we're closing public comment for agenda R8. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R8 was approved five-zero for the second reading. Unless there are anything else that we don't have on the agenda, we have no other business before the council this evening. I want to wish everyone on council, and all of you out there, and all of our citizens, to have a blessed Thanksgiving next week, and we stand in jury. Thank you.
Thank you. You too, Fred.
Absolutely.